Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the February 18th, 2020 work session of Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. An executive session of the board was held on January 23rd, 2020, in the Farina Administration Building for the purpose of reviewing and discussing personnel matters related to the employment of specific members of the Methacton Education Association and Methacton Administrative Organization. By way of attendance, we have all board members here this evening with the exception of Ms. Reese. For recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn to Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have two presentations, and on February, we have one scheduled. If it's no objection to members of the board, I'd like to start with the second presentation for this evening, the master plan bid review and summer projects for 2020 recommendations. This evening, we have James Miller from Fedavia, who is our owner's rep, and they're here to address all the items that are listed under the section -- spare with me one second -- under 9E, the master plan information. That includes two items from the current work and the proposed projects for this summer of 2020. Mr. Miller?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk tonight. At the July 2019 board meeting, Fedavia was tasked with obtaining bids for six projects for an estimated total of $14.3 million. At the February 2020 Property and Committee meeting, Fedavia was proud to announce the successful opening biddings, and in most cases with good contractor participation, which have concluded with Methacton School District having six projects come in within budget totaling $13.8 million. Since the July 2019 board meeting, front entry project was also included in the bid process with the apparent low bid of $306,000. And after reviewing the bids with the property committee, the committee is putting forward the recommendation to move forward with four of the projects. These include the Eagleville Elementary Facade Repair Project, the High School Canopy and Pads Project, the High School Re-roofing Base Bid B Project, and the High School Front Entry Project. Since the committee recommendation, we received a bid dispute claim with the High School Re-roofing Project, and after consulting with the school district solicitor, the directive is to move forward with rebidding that package, and Fedavia is anticipating those bid results back to you this time next month. We have -- what we'll do now is I have Theresa and Stephanie and Alex up the back there from Shepherd Restoration, and I'll bring Stephanie up to talk about the three bid projects, the three bids that we do have, which is the High School Canopy Project, Eagleville Facade Repair, and the Front Entry Project.
So for Eagleville Elementary, we had the bid opening was on February 4th. We had the apparent little bidder was Quinn Construction from Essington, PA with $336,400, which is within the budget, which we had originally estimated at $450,000. So the contractor cleared all the requirements. They submitted everything that they were supposed to do for that. SRE has worked with Quinn Construction on previous projects with good success for that. So the committee's recommendation is to move forward with the base bid and the alternates, the alternates being the control joints repair and the weepal repair for the south side of the building, the stick built, the stud built side, and the rest of the work is the base bid side for all of the flashing repairs.
So we can take questions on those. Mr. Navarrette, do you want to start, by any chance?
Yeah, just a quick comment there. So just for the board's notice, so the way it's listed on here, it says exterior veneer replaced with alternative cladding. That was part of -- that was a holdover from the discussion that we had previously about doing the, what we're going to refer to as the left side of the building, the stick side of the building. This is related to masonry work on the right-hand side of the building, so we decided to come back and redo new design work for the left side of the building. So if there's any questions about that.
Any other questions, members to my right? If not, to my left? If not, let's go on to the second project. Thank you.
So the next project is at the high school, here at the high school, the pads and canopy project. So that's obviously the, all the concrete work that's around the building and the canopies, the canopy work. So the apparent little bidder out of four bidders was SMJ Contracting out of Douglasville, PA with $1,725,000 bid. So the budget, the what had been previously established over the summer is $1.18 million. And so we've had some, there were some additional items that were added from that time to the next bid, which is what is the change in the cost. And we can go over that in a minute. The contractors submitted all of their required paperwork. Fedavia has worked with this contractor before with good success, and they've also worked here at the school district here with, I'm assuming, good success. There were not as many bids for this project. There was a lot of, there was some pushback on getting on the schedule because there wasn't a lot of contract, concrete contractors that could actually make the time schedule that was established in the bid. So the committee's recommendation has been move forward with the base bid and accept the alternate of the two additional canopies over at the gym. The extra work between the previous bid and this bid includes that we increased the thickness of the sidewalk over at the press box to accommodate for the crane to change out the lights for those, the big lights over at the field, to take out the acid tank that was there, and the allowances had not previously been included in that budget. So that is what accounts for all of that. And we have a possibility that we could actually reduce the cost of the overall project by going with a different canopy manufacturer. So we're looking at that post-award to see if we can reduce that cost.
So, Mr. Miller, I know we spoke about looking at that reduction through a canopy manufacturer change. Were we able to have any conclusive results?
Well, right at this moment in time, we did get some initial numbers. However, we're vetting out the manufacturer that we've got right now, and because we've got some concerns with that one manufacturer. We have reached out to two other manufacturers, so we are actually waiting for their numbers as well. So we're actually trying to bring this number down as far as we can.
Do you think that you'll have an estimate before this item goes up for bid next week? Or for vote, I'm sorry.
For vote. I'll see what I can do to get some other numbers.
Okay. Questions on the pads and canopies project, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, on the time schedule you reference, that, I'm just trying to decouple the increase of $545,000. So the $545,000 is the increase in scope?
Yeah.
But do we believe that any of the increase in costs is related to many of the suppliers not being able to meet our time schedule?
It reduced the amount of contractors that were, the concrete contractors that were willing to bid it, yes. It did reduce the quantity of contractors, so therefore the numbers did drive up a little bit for that as well. But the biggest item between those is the actual allowances, which we have for $216,000.
I'm sorry, say it again.
$216,000.
Yeah, I got that part. What did you say in front of it?
The allowances.
The allowances, okay. Sorry.
As for if we have any issues with unforeseen conditions for the, on suitable soils, as well as some extra concrete work for if we need to move into a different direction with additional sidewalks, et cetera. So that's what we've got in this allowance to cover for some unforeseen.
Okay. So the scope change, generally what you're telling us, if I'm understanding correctly, the scope change justifies the 1.725?
Yes.
Not just, if we had more bidders, it's possible it would have been less?
So, so let me just add to that. So we had the same discussion in the property committee meeting, and Mr. Navarrette, please, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. The sheet that you shared with the property committee is based on the original budget for this project and the additional items that were added. We believe that we are about $45,000, the bids come in about $45,000 higher than we had estimated.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions on the pads and canopy projects, members to my left? If not, members to my right?
The switch out canopies that you're reaching out to the canopy manufacturers?
Yes.
Why the delay? Can we get that number before next week? I mean, if I sell, if I'm in a business of selling canopies and someone called me and said, "I want to buy canopies," I'd get a quote out in about five minutes. Is that my oversimplifying that, or?
Due to the fact that we've got some complex canopies, especially the one, the three large canopies, some of the smaller guys are not wanting to go for that. So we're actually reaching out to the big companies and getting some pricing. What we did was we got one proposal back the day before we got bid, and that's the person that we're vetting out right now. Their numbers are good, but we've got concerns with manufacturing of that product. So we are actually vetting that manufacturer right now, and at the same time, we've got two others that we've reached out to.
So you have in your hand a lower quote slash bid, and you're now just making sure that they can 100% spec it out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to my right? Okay, next project?
The next project was for the front entry replacement. We got three bidders, and they were, the apparent little bidder was Walton at $306,000. Their initial budget was $298,800 essentially, so that's a pretty good margin for how that came in. So, and that represents the canopy that we would put out there, the five-foot-deep canopy, and then also the lit signage, which was not included in the original budget. So the contractors provided all the required paperwork and bond information. They've been fully vetted by Fedavia. This is not somebody that the design team has worked with to date. We would also recommend that if the canopy manufacturer is changed for the canopy project, that that would be the same manufacturer here to make sure that everything is the same. So there may be, if there's a cost reduction for the canopy, it's possible there would be a cost reduction here, but not known yet. So the committee's recommendation has been to move forward with the base bid with the canopy, the five-foot-deep canopy and the lit signage.
Can you talk about the timeline for that project?
Yeah, everyone's real nervous about it. We have the metal panel manufacturer is, has said that they will, without an additional cost, they'll work with us, and they'll actually move their manufacturing, the work that they have in their factory around in order to accommodate us to try and make the deadline. But they're very concerned about that tight, that tight window to try and make it for graduation. So as soon as they can get going, they would like to do that. So, but they, right now, today, they've said, yes, they think they can make it, but if anything slips, that's going to be a problem for them.
So what we have set up here is this work is going to be carried out during school, and what we're doing is we've actually, just like what happened when we took the masonry down, we are going to have the front entrance closed off except for egress only. So what will happen is we have going to have almost like a scaffold chute going right out to the building, so that means if there was an emergency, we would shut down and everybody would be vetted through the tunnel, then coming out to the front of the building. So that's what we have already previously sorted out with the fire department and the fire chief, so everybody's on the same page of how we're going to tackle this. And we have got it set up that they are going to be working on this in spring of this year and to, with the intent to have the frontage finished for graduation in May.
Questions on the high school front entrance facade, members to my right?
Do you want to make a comment on the lighting? I know that was a point of discussion here, and then we talked about it in property as well.
I'm sorry.
Do you want, we had a, all right, so I'll do it.
I can't take two conversations at one time.
That's fine. Just, there was a discussion beforehand about the lighting and how we were going to light the name of the building on the school. There were concerns about, with Worcester Township Wardens, that the lights apparently can't extend above the building and then shine down. So the sign is going to be backlit, like a halo effect, if you will.
Good, good point. Anyone else? I'm sorry. To my left, any questions? So I think that, you know, pending the approval by the board next week on all these projects, specifically the high school front entrance facade, I imagine that the moment the vote is taken, you'll be running this facade project to the venue. Okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
No, there's going to be.
And while all these projects are important, we certainly want you to recognize, as we do, how important, you know, getting the facade for the high school sprawd away is to us and to our students and to our community. So we appreciate your recognition of that. Any final questions for, from members of the board? I think it's important that we talk about the other project, just real quick. There was a roofing project that was out to bid, and I believe there were two roofs as part of that bid. It was recommended by the property committee after the review of that, that the one roof, which is subject to other mechanical units and work with the MEP, potential future MEP project in the high school, that would be chasing extra work and extra cost that's unnecessary. But the roof that is commonly known as the roof over the commons area in the back of the school wouldn't have those units or would not be subject to those issues. So the prices are good, we're good. We want to rebid that work, and hopefully we'll have that in about a month for you for consideration. With that said, any final comments, questions about the work that's proposed for this summer? Yes?
I just have one comment. In looking at the high school canopy bid, that bid, the final bid result is so high to me. I mean, that's almost like, the increase is like another project. And I know they said there were additional things that were added to it. I'm just thinking, like, based on how you do your, I guess, your budget and getting a bid result like that, what do you generally, is there anything else that you tend to look at, or anything else you do after receiving something like this?
The biggest one that you have to take into consideration is the allowances, which is what we, all the bids that we have here, we have an allowance incorporated into the project to cover for any unforeseen conditions, et cetera. So we have, at least like I mentioned earlier, $215,000, if I actually said $216,000 for that. So that takes allegedly half of your cost, the differential between the base bid and the budget number.
So the allowance wasn't included in, I guess, the projected bid?
That is correct.
Any other comments on the projects? Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, just a quick word on the discussions that happened between property and finance. So if you guys remember, we went out originally with 15 or 16 million dollars worth of projects and said we were going to come back and pick and choose what we were going to do. So in the, between the two committees, we discussed not just the projects, the budgets, what needed to be done, the priority of projects, but also the funding for these projects, as well as Arrowhead, what was sustainable in the long term. We got projections and finance from PFM about different financing models. And between the committees, it took the administration's recommendation to limit master plan work over the next three years in like a $9 million range, maybe nine to 10, depending on where things shake out. So this is the first step towards that. We noted that there's work to be done on Eagleville. That is a priority with the facade there. So right now, that looks like our primary project for next year. But that would also include not just facade work, but possibly MEP work as well, right? That was one of the discussions about how we integrate those two projects together. So there's some cost estimations that have to happen from there, and then, so we have a better idea of what that would look like. Maybe we can knock Eagleville, all the major Eagleville improvements out in one shot, and then we can move forward with the high school MEP project, perhaps in the third year or beyond. So that's kind of the rough schedule that we worked out between finance and property. And if anybody has any questions about the how or why of that.
Seeing no questions? Any other comments on master plan projects? Mr. Miller, would you mind going over the refunds?
Yeah, the two change orders, no problem. As Dr. Zerbi went and mentioned, under item nine, you've got item nine, 9E, one and two. You will notice that there's two credit change orders there. This is basically closing out our masonry project for 2019, and at the same time, this will also close out the electrical portion of the MEP project from 2019 as well. We have already closed out a portion of the other projects, and this is just a conclusion. It's just, what we have is some of the allowances that are not being utilized, so therefore that's coming back to the owner as a credit. So this is, this will then, once approved, it will close the change orders, and then it would actually mean that the final pay application can get finalized and paid off, and we can close that out.
Thank you. Any other questions on those matters?
No, just a commentary, because I know Samira made a comment before about the allowances. So this, ideally, this is what happens when we do the project right, and we don't have any surprises. Those allowances will come back to us, not actually in the form of a check, but in checks we don't write. So these are a good thing, and the fact that these projects came in the way they were supposed to. So we hope that that's how things progress this summer as well.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
And thank you, design professionals, for your support. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Che Regina, and he will be providing the Methacton Midyear Substitute Report. So you can stay seated. You have a copy of the presentation at your table. We will project the presentation on the screen behind you.
Good evening, everyone. The midyear results for our substitute teacher report, what we do each year, we provide a midyear report and an end-of-year report. And each of those reports, the highlight of them is where we are standing with our substitute teacher pool. So for those that know and have been around for a little while, we recognize that there is a substitute teacher shortage. And so we're reporting out each year just to let you know kind of where we stand in the district and where we stand comparatively with the other districts in the area. Just an agenda for the topic this evening. First one is how we look in Methacton for our substitute teacher statistics, and look at a comparative result between last year and this year. The second one is what is our current pay structure, and what does that pay structure look like compared to the other districts in the area? We're looking at some comparative results. So what do our fill rates look like compared to those around us? Historical comparison, so a three-year look back on what has been taking place in our district and in others. Some of the substitute pool statistics. So some of those get a little bit more specific, and I'll speak to that slide when we get there, because it almost reads a little bit confusing. I recognize when I read it a few times this afternoon. Daily averages, what does that look like each day? So what is our average substitute pool that we're accessing? How many people are typically off in a day? And what does that look like from Monday to Friday on average? We did ask a question of STS to ask the company, how are they doing with their own staffing? And what are they recognizing over the last five years? Some feedback on our guest teacher information, and then recommendations we have moving forward. So our year-to-date statistics, we took a snapshot of January 23rd, 2019 compared to January 23rd, 2020. We do recognize that we are a few days different, depending on where we started the school year at, but the percentages still remain consistent. So what we do notice is that we need less subs than we did this year, last year at this time, a little less than 800. But our fill rate is less. At this point in time last year, we were at 91.31%, and this year, we're at 87.53%. Our per diem rates, so in 2017, 2018, we had some, we had made some changes to what our current rates are. We have a guest teacher rate at $95 a day and $105 a day, depending on how many days they're here. We have a non-retiree rate and a retiree rate, and we also have a long-term rate, and that's anyone that's here in a consecutive position for 45 days or more. And they have to be certified in that specific area in order to occupy a position for that length of time. How does that compare with the district around us? So these are rate ranges. So most of the people around us have the same thing that we do. If you're with them for X number of days, you'll start at a preliminary rate, and this does not include guest teacher rates, of course. And if you're with them for an extended amount of time, you will produce a greater rate. Most of them have a scaled or a tiered process to what they're looking at. We do not share what the district's names are. STS asked us to keep that confidential. And the new district one and two, or two new districts that they've pulled into STS this year, that we do not have in some of the statistical results that we're going to show you in further slides. So that's the different references that you see there. Case in point, in this slide, we're looking at our fill rates as compared to the others in the area. Again, keeping that consistent, I recognize that the fill rates are not in order, so the next slide shows you a graphical representation of what those look like. We are ranked third. We are 8% higher than the peer average, but we still have two districts that were at about 89%. District one's approximately at 90%, and District six is approximately 91%. We did send out a poll to all the districts, even those that aren't using STS, and we do have districts in the area that are about a, that are 1 at 35% fill rate and 1 at a 55% fill rate. So we recognize that we want to do better than what we have right now. We do recognize others are struggling far worse than we are.
Che, can you say that number, those numbers again? Those other districts are what?
35% and 55%.
Okay, I thought I misheard you.
Nope. And they are, they're very close to us. They're within the county boundaries. The three-year fill rate compared county peer group, so this is looking back three years of each of the schools that we are looking at in our statistical data. You'll notice there are some trends that take place that we obviously would question, and you may have some questions on those. But ultimately, looking at ours, we are somewhat stable, similar to what District six is seeing This slide is the slide that probably needs a little bit of explanation. So the substitute pool comparisons, so the first data set, what it's looking at is last year at this time, we had 129 subs in our pool. This year, we have 126 subs in our pool. So simply, if you look at it, you would think, okay, we lost three subs, but that's not exactly what happened. We had actually lost 52 subs from last year to this year, and we have gained 49 subs. So there's a lot of recruitment and loss going on in the background. And most of these subs are getting hired as full-time teachers in the off-season, so that's naturally where you're going to see these numbers. Long-term subs, I show you this statistic because this does impact our sub ratios. Our long-term sub rate is about $250 a day. We often see that these are filled immediately. We don't have a hard time finding long-term subs, unless it's a difficult area to find a long-term sub, right? So if it's a foreign language or a special education, we all recognize that that is very difficult to find. But if we look back even '17, '18, we had 31 long-term subs. So we are reducing that number. And there, I love to tell you there's a magic formula to that. It's not. It just happens to be by chance for those that need it. It could be based on sabbatical, uncompensated leave, medical situations, there's a number of things that could affect that. Our daily average for sub rates, so we went back to October, and the reason we went back to October because November, December, and January are awful months to try to draw
months to try to draw average comparisons on, just naturally because of the vacations, the breaks, the holiday seasons going on. So we went back to October, and we noticed we have about 22 people out per day that need substitutes. Absences increase on Mondays and Fridays. Now, if you look back to May, this number drastically changes. So the next slide, we're going to look at the daily averages that we have each day. And this is our October statistics. So on Mondays, we're looking at about 33.1 individuals that are out that need substitutes. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, it lessens. And then, of course, on Friday, it jumps. If we do look at our information, the same information back in May, just to give you a comparison, we have about 40 people out per day in May. And on Fridays, on average, we average 58 people out that need substitutes. To look at that as a percentage, at 40 people out, we have 400 teachers. That's 10% of our teacher workforce is out every day that has substitutes coming in. So just something to keep in mind as we're working through that process, that's, that's a lot of transition each day. We did ask STS about staffing. So on their end, we recognize that it's difficult in the school district, so we asked them, what does your five-year history look like? You know, you, you obviously had substitutes five years ago in a, in a specific pool. What does it look like now? So their numbers have, have dropped as well. They're currently at 5,071 professional staff. Just two years ago, they had 5,572 staff, 501 staff decrease. And, and the decline is due to fewer individuals going into the profession. It's quite simply put, what some of the PD information that most of you have probably seen before, and if you haven't, in previous 2009, 2010 timeframe, they're looking at about giving out 14,000 licenses per year to teachers. And that, those are licenses of individuals that are getting certifications with PDE to teach. In 2016, 2017, that number dropped to 4,412. That's a 71% decline since 2009. So I, I mean, to put that in perspective, they're recognizing the same thing that we are in the school system. There's just less people going into the profession. One of the bright spots for us has been our guest teacher program. So we have held orientations on spring of 2019 and fall of 2019. They really were met with great success. We, we had positive feedback from those. We'll talk a little bit about that in the recommendation section. And we have our next orientation set up for March 11th and March 12th. You may think, okay, you have 10 guest teachers, but doesn't seem like a lot, Che, but it makes up, they have filled 135 positions for us so far, making up 4.4% of our fill rate at this moment in time. So that has obviously been very, very helpful for us. And right now, we have eight signed up for our March attendance. So we're, we're hopefully building some momentum in that area. Some recommendations, so there's three specific ones. Of course, the first one is continuing, moving forward with the guest teacher program. Again, positive feedback. Each of the individuals that has been, been in that program, that have gone through other programs, they, the first day is a, a one-on, or as a training with all of our directors. Each comes in for a certain section of time. They kind of go over curriculum. So Dr. Katona goes over curriculum. Dr. Engstad goes over special education and people services. We go over HR. So it's really a very informative session. The second day, they go out into the buildings. They shadow a teacher for three hours. And then they go on lunch, and they come back, and then they debrief with us what they saw in the classrooms, questions that they have from their experience. And again, some really positive feedback that we get from, from that training. The second recommendation I have is, we have three district substitutes. What that means is these are individuals that are assigned to our district every day. They come in no matter what. So we don't often have 100% fill rate. And our minimum, a number of people needed are 10, nine to 10 individuals on a given day, as high as 58. So what I'd like to do is bring a district sub into each one of our buildings each day to be able to cover, these people will know that they have a job every day. They'll know they're going to be getting paid the $135 pay rate, and we'll be locking them in immediately. They will take care, and there'll be the assignment of any positions that are left over, but they'll always be blocked off in one position. So there will be no need for excess. Of course, if we get to a day where we have seven open positions and we have an eighth person, yes, that's a possibility. It's very unlikely. We almost never, matter of fact, this year, the smallest was 10. So very unlikely. And even in September, you might think, Che, the first day of school, we have individuals that are held from other districts, people on uncompensated leave. So we, we're seeing those numbers even at the first day of school. So that would be my second recommendation, is to put in a day-to-day district sub in each one of our buildings, and two in the high school, just because of the numbers that we see there on a day-to-day basis. And our focus is, and my third recommendation, our focus is typically on how do we increase the pool size? Right, it's the numerator of the ratio, right? You can either increase the numerator or decrease the denominator. And we haven't focused on decreasing the denominator yet. We haven't focused on why do we have so many absences? So I would like to dig into that a little bit with your permission. I haven't done a lot of research into that, but I'd like to, if the board is comfortable with me doing so. So that is the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Very good, Che. Questions for Mr. Regina, to my left? Mr. Winters?
On that same subject, Che, on slide six, so I realize that there's, although when we did this a couple of years ago, we actually had the names of the districts, but it doesn't matter to me so much. It's more the, the needed aspect per opportunity for, for needing a substitute. So I would like to see if you could find the ratios, because if District one is Springfield, for example, by chance, and they only needed 400 more substitutes than we did, that is probably related to contract.
Great question.
Where we have five personal days and they have three. So it'd be interesting to see, that would be, you need to index it so that we can compare it.
Will do.
Anyone else to my left?
No, that was definitely my one question. And then that, the other part is, am I, am I understanding that basically the one that gets filled the most doesn't pay the most, though? Like the one that District one, they're, they pay 110 to 120?
Yes, District one saw a major jump, right? I mean, it's one thing that probably jumps right out at you when you look at the three-year average. They were almost the lowest one. So if you go to slide eight, the District one, they were about, about as low as you could get last year, and have jumped to one of the higher rates. So they've done a few things. They have added a dollar value, they added $10 to their going daily rate, which is still less than ours.
Right.
And they also increased their district substitute pool. So they have, what we're recommending, they did last year.
I think it's a great idea for the increasing from three to eight. I'm all for it. I support that.
Anyone else to my left?
So just a quick question. What's, just because I'm not familiar with the guest teacher program. What, how many times can I guess somebody come in under that program? Is it a one time?
No, it's, it's a great question. So the guest teacher program, historically, those that are certified to teach could substitute. And in order to do that, you didn't necessarily have to be certified in a specific area. So if you were certified to teach English, you could come in for math. You just couldn't do it 20 days in a row. I want to say five or six years ago, and it very well could be longer. I don't have that number in front of me. But they implemented a system in which, if you have a four-year degree, you could substitute teach. And you're under what they call an emergency permit 06 with the state, which means that you could essentially do the same thing. You can substitute for any placement for no longer than 20 days. But you actually have to be the last resort for a school district. They have to be able to go through everyone that's certified first, and then they can go to the guest teacher rate. So what we do, Samira, is we look at, we'll post a position for a substitute position, and we will let it sit out there for, let's say, somebody puts in for a week. And what we'll say is for 50% of that week, so we'll say three and a half days, that position will not be accessible to guest teachers. But once it gets to that threshold where we don't find anybody the first 50%, it now opens up to everyone the second 50%. Good question.
Thank you.
Anyone else to my left? To my right? Mr. McGinnis?
Che, for the guest teacher program, are you looking for that, I'll say kid right out of college who may not find a home? Are you going to kind of grow it into, hey, come in here and do this for a year, year and a half, and this is kind of a training ground to get a full-time gig?
It, we've seen it, so right here, we have, we actually have not seen that here locally. It's been people that have in the area that maybe it's a second career, they have a degree, might have chosen a career at first, may have been home with family, and then have the opportunity now that, that the children are, are out into the school system that they can come in. My previous district, that's exactly what we saw. We saw individuals that were graduating from college that couldn't find a job in their field and did this until they could find a job. So we just haven't seen that.
But due to the numbers now, you're, you're, you're a price taker as a price setter right now. You're taking what you can get.
That's correct. There are some districts that are looking at a similar emergency permit 06 system. And there was a system that the governor put in place a few years ago that allows students in college to come and substitute for the school district. And, and we have not done that yet, for obvious reasons, but there's a limit to that. You can only do that for 20 days in a school year. But yes, there, there are other options. Thank you.
Mr. Neverett?
Yeah, Che, thanks for bringing this to us. I know I asked for it. I think most of my questions had been asked, Paul and Jen had the, the most prescient one about the why. So thank you for anticipating some of the questions. I, I guess the other piece of data that would be interesting, too, would be to put on top of that, the fill rate trend is also how some of the rates have changed in those districts. I know it doesn't necessarily quite overlap, but it'd be good to know that. And then the other question I had around the, one, I do support the, the increase in, in the number of district substitutes that would keep around on a permanent basis. That makes all the sense in the world. Certainly, it's a major disruption to teachers and students when they've got to share classrooms or where there's coverage, and it's just, it changes the educational experience. So I'm all in favor of that. Where do most of the guest teachers end up? Do they end up at the high school?
You know, honestly, at first, I thought it would be elementary school. I thought the perception of it would be fun to be in the elementary schools, it'd be, but that's not what we're seeing. We actually have more that are interested in high school positions. And I think it, again, this is a total speculation, but I think they're connecting it more to what their original degrees were, and that's an expertise area for them, so they feel very comfortable in that area. But again, pure speculation, but that's what it seemed to be getting some, from some of our results.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Regina? Well done, thank you. That ends the guest and presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. So next week, we will hear from Dr. Roberts, recognizing the staff at Arrowhead. We'll have reports. Any comments on the board meeting minutes? Okay, fiscal items, Mr. Booker.
Good evening. This month, for your approval, we'll have the list of bills, the treasurer's report, budgetary transfers, approval of the MCIU membership service budget for 2020, 2021. The cost of methactin in the school district is $72,867. And this represents a decrease of $305 from last year, and a previously discussed five master plan projects.
Any questions from the board on these fiscal items? All right, moving on to personnel, then. Mr. Regina?
Good evening. A few items for the board's consideration this evening, and a few corrections. I do want to apologize, I missed some as I was reviewing that this afternoon, so just a few corrections. The first one for resignation for classified, we have an individual that has been offered a full-time position at a neighboring district, so we wish them congratulations, but they had moved on, and they were currently a recess assistant at Arrowhead. The change in status professional is one of the corrections. So that is actually an uncompensated leave for professional, and that should be item And that item is a, for a medical leave. Item G, change of status for classified, both of those positions are replacement positions. My second apology comes with item H. And those two individuals should be classified uncompensated leave. Those are both classified employees. Again, my apologies. Both of those are also medical. And for item K, we do have 12 supplemental contracts. And there's a host of things involved in that, some related to IEP needs, some for new mentorships taking place in the second semester. And one in particular with the on-the-road driver's ed program, that was an item that was missed in January that should have been on the January agenda. So we are certainly limiting that. That was something between my office and the high school, just a miscommunication. So we will certainly be working on that in the future as well. And the last item we have is for volunteers. Thank you.
Any questions from the board on the personnel items?
Che, the K6, track and field assistant coach, is that boys or girls?
You know, I, boy, is it boys? Thank you.
Okay. Can we also get a list of outstanding vacancies from the assistant coaches? Because the five listed here are all for boys, sports.
I will, I will get that data to you immediately.
Thank you.
Anyone else with personnel questions?
Could I ask you a question? For the on-the-road program, that is, that is the after-school program that is run, and is there a fee that is collected from that, or no?
Yeah, there is, there is a student fee for on-the-road training. Which, which, which pays for those items, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, we have curriculum and programs. Dr. Katona gets the night off, looks like.
Next month.
Next month, you'll have stuff for us. All right, we'll look forward to it. Policy, we have 10 policies up for a first reading, and seven for a second reading that we'll be voting on next week. Gifts and donations, looks like we have a gift from Bill Feely of Underwater Construction, and a couple of gifts from the Merck Foundation. We have one trip to approve, and we have the 2020, 2021 methactin school calendar. Are there any comments or questions from the board on these items? Mr. Neverett?
Can we talk about the calendar?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
All right. I'll just make my annual statement that I think it's stupid to have two random days off in March. I think we should build school, we should build snow days into the calendar. I understand there's a contractual restriction. I'm just making my point that I think it's stupid. That being said, is there a way for us to get around having the last day of school scheduled for a Monday? I'm sure we'll have perfect attendance that day, but I just...
So there is. We can certainly do something to make it the Friday, but there'll be a lot of maneuvering that will occur. And with that, there is, you know, high potential for having to use that day anyhow at some point in a snow day. Obviously, not this year, at least I hope not. I guess I shouldn't say that. Yeah. But, but secondly, we could add days on to the, the calendar to make it a Tuesday or Wednesday by putting in specific holidays for, for the district. So I know we wouldn't want to go that way either. So there's, there's a lot of discussion about how this calendar, you know, is developed, and I, I just want to let the board know that there's no great, there's no great calendar. I just want to let the board know that there's no great, there's no great calendar. So, every district struggles with their history, struggles with the things that might be important to them. And this is really our calendar to, you know, make sure we do what's right for our students, our families, our teachers, and for the organization. So, some of the, some of the calendar really, if you look at it, has a focus on some requests that we received from the staff, where we normally have an October in-service, where when we're in our prime and our energy is high, we move the in-service to maybe a second part of the year rather than having it in October as we generally would. The start of school being August 31st, that's just dictated by our collective bargaining agreement as per the majority of schools, sending schools to the North Monaco Technical Career Center. So, with the fact that the majority are starting on the 31st with the first student day, that pretty much dictates that particular process. You notice the holidays. We updated the calendar online from this weekend to reflect the PSA and Keystone testing windows, so there's some new colors on the sheet if you were looking at it over the weekend that is added. We're still getting some feedback from the association. You know, we had conversations about half-days. You know, how can we build half-days in, of student half-days and professional development into the calendar to create opportunity for professional development and growth at the same time, you know, creating natural breaks for everyone? And while we recognize there's a lot of value in that, we spent a lot of time looking at that. You know, it boils down to while that might be good for our staff and is what we should do, we know that's going to be a burden on our families, and we also know that's going to be a transportation challenge in terms of cost. We will see a rise in our costs for those particular days. So, yeah, the dates in here, we'll still take some feedback. I think it takes a lot to, for people to absorb this and think through it, so I don't expect everyone to have a bunch of suggestions here this evening, but if you have them, you know, we want to make sure that we put the right calendar forward, the best calendar forward based on, you know, what we can do for our families, our students, and our staff here. So, any other inputs, welcome.
Yeah, how many days are in this calendar? I know in the past, we've done 181.
It's a different number of days depending on what building you're in.
Okay.
There's a different number of Act 80 days which are equivalent to student attendance days. I can get that number for you. I did the calculation, but I don't want to repeat what off the top of my head.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The reason that I'm asking is that I seem to remember us having a conversation at one point, possibly regarding setting a graduation date or something, but there is a fine, I guess, that's assessed from the state if you fall short in the number of days, correct?
So, we need, yeah, we need to meet two criteria. We need to meet a certain number of hours, 900 hours for elementary students and 990 for secondary students, and we need to have 180 days of attendance. So, the actual attendance may vary from, the physical attendance of students may vary from the 180 so long as you take advantage of the state's Act 80 regulation whereby providing professional development, parent-teacher conferences, things that we typically have done in the past and that are listed here in this calendar. So, we do take advantage of those, as many as two Act 80 days, I think, are on here for the high school and up to, I'm going to get to those numbers.
Yeah, that's fine. So, what I'm getting at here is it may be worth running some kind of an analysis because, as Mr. Navarre pointed out, having that Monday, the odds of student attendance being anywhere near optimal are pretty low. The cost to the district of running buses on that day, what would that be versus what would the cost be in terms of a fine that we would have to pay to the state for not having enough hours or days? And I don't know that that's even going to be a consideration because, like I said, I seem to remember in the past, excuse me, that this has been 181-day calendar. So, if that is the case, that it's 181 days, we can chop that 14th off and be at 180 and still meet the state requirements.
It would be my recommendation that if you want to consider that, it's my recommendation, if you want to consider that, you consider that after you adopt the calendar with the actual number of days in it and closer to that timeframe. But I can certainly provide you the data so that you know that in advance of approving this. But I would not recommend you approving a calendar that doesn't meet the requirement. Other questions, comments, yes, Mr. Navarre?
Yeah, just one more thing. I realize that conferences lines up very well with Thanksgiving and the half-days and what we do with parents on those days, but given the discussions around moving to, away from quarters to trimesters, does it make sense to move conferences to a later time in the year to better line up with the end of the first trimester if that's what we do?
Yeah, that's another one of the items that we looked at. So, as an example, what was thought was moving the conferences for elementary to the November 2nd, 3rd timeframe, and that would, well, if you look at this calendar right now, November 30th is the actual end of the trimester. So, what would happen is you would move, if we would move the conferences for elementary to the 2nd and 3rd, which kind of makes sense because elementary is the only one off on the 3rd, that's the election day. We typically do that for the safety of staff and students because of the extra cars in the parking lot and so forth, because our elementary schools are all used as polling places. We then also know that, you know, now we would create challenges for families to not only do those conferences, but then have to show up for conferences for Arcola. Then the next thing is, well, what if we move all of our conferences to the 2nd and 3rd? And then what happens is we end up, you know, reducing the amount of family time associated or break time associated with our traditional Thanksgiving holiday timeframe, because, to be quite frank, not all parents take advantage of the parent-teacher conferences. And so, those are some of the things that we discuss. So, we would either, we'd either find ourselves doing teacher conferences K through 8 on the 2nd and 3rd, leaving the report cards for trimesters being out here, and then the report cards for the Arcola and Skyview Group being after their conferences too. So, it would just be the reverse problem. There's no great, there's no great solution on this. But we did talk, there was a lot of serious discussion about our communication to families, and while our parent-teacher conferences are critical to the relationships that we have with our parents, it should be known that we also and always encourage our teachers and our parents to communicate with each other regularly whenever they feel that there's a concern, so that we shouldn't necessarily wait until these moments in time to have these meetings, but we do think they're valuable. We certainly want to continue them, and we haven't come up with a better plan that will suit everyone and everyone's needs. So, there's a, there's options. It's just a matter of, you know, what's the better choice and how we want to address that. Now, one thing I do want to share with the board is this, you know, a lot of what we, I'm sure you heard this, because I got a lot of feedback, a lot of people are asking me, you know, when is the first day of school for next year because of the way this calendar, like, you know, every six to seven years, it becomes a challenge because it falls either early or late. We typically start our first student day after the Labor Day holiday whenever possible, yeah, Labor Day holiday whenever possible. So, the one thought is, you know, while I'm not prepared tonight, or I won't be prepared next week, but my recommendation moving forward would be to come to the board every January slash February with a two-year calendar so that we get all that, we're worked out in advance, and we provide that information, and we post that information, and we don't have, you know, all those questions. So, you know, while you don't need to agree to that or disagree to it this evening, I'm just saying that that's what I'd like to do. A number of other districts are doing that, and that doesn't mean you can't change if you find a need or an issue arises, but it does allow you to plan better, and it certainly informs our families around, you know, things that are important to them. So, any other questions on the calendar, Ms. Drummond?
I like the idea of a two-year calendar cycle to plan. I just, my feedback on the, having the last day as a Monday, I think it's fine because it's probably, if there's a snow day in there, it's probably going to really be Tuesday or Wednesday in reality, and I think we had the same thing like three years ago, and it's fine. It's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, thank you very much. I will, I'll just let you know that I'm still taking any feedback from the association. As you know, I commonly provide them as a courteous, as a courtesy to provide them a copy of this. So, we were exchanging some, you know, communications just this morning, and if I have other suggestions, I'll try to get them to you and provide notice as far in advance as I possibly can. Thank you.
All right. We have dates for our calendars with our regular schedule of meetings, and I noticed this month, we've got the locations listed as well, which is nice. Does anyone have anything for old business this evening? Any new business? Okay. With that, I will open it up to courtesy of the floor. Ms. Kaplan?
So, I want to talk about the German teacher mess. I want to start off by saying that for my son, the German experience in Methacton was one of the best. It's truly one of his best experiences in the district. He's still in contact with Monica. It's a wonderful experience. This year, last year was tough. This year is a nightmare. For those of us who went to back-to-school night at the high school, it was evident when you walked into the room that the person who had been hired was not competent to be teaching. The kids went through, I think until mid to late November with her, then Monica stepped in. So, these kids have had two and a half months of instruction up till now. Next week is mid marking period for third marking period, and you have at least two classes at the high school, and I don't know how many at Arcola, who have had two and a half months of instruction in German. That's out of control. We're waiting on certification or clearances or whatever on a new German teacher. So, I went in and I met with Dr. Sorgini today to voice my concerns. I'm not happy with the solution. I realize that you can't find German-certified teachers or substitutes. I know why he has made the decision to combine classes. Again, as a parent, I don't, I don't think that it is conducive to learning, but I'm wondering why we can't hire this woman who just graduated from Temple as a guest teacher until she, until her certification comes through. Would that be a viable plan? I mean...
We can get to your questions at the end. Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Okay. So, at the end of the year, these kids are going to have about five and a half months of instruction. That's not adequate, and that's not acceptable. That's ridiculous. And that's, that's on this district. It's not on the teachers, it's not on the high school principal or the Arcola principal, it's on this district, that these kids are getting an unacceptable five and a half months of German instruction. And then you have kids struggling. You wonder why they're struggling. I don't think any of you would want that for your children. I don't want it for my child.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. Mr. Andrews?
John Andrews, Lower Providence. First off, I'd like to say that Mr. Regina did a fine job this evening on discussing the substitute teacher situation over the years. So, finally, there are some concerns with ranking as discussed here at your last meeting. Ms. Howell, Ms. Larsonis, Ms. Cancro, Mr. Winters, and Mr. McGinnis all seem to recognize that there's a ranking problem, as well as the superintendent. Not, yet not one of you appears to tie the rank to the grade structure. I presented you with a chart in one of my speeches emailed to you recently. Shows the ranks of schools of 1 to 74 in southeast Pennsylvania. There's just two schools with, in that setup with K to 4, 5 to 6, and 7 to 8, Methacton at 59, and Spring Ford at 36. There are 14 schools that have better ranking, and they are all K to 5 and 6 to 8 with an average of 29. If that isn't good proof that you should be switching to K to 5 and 6 to 8, I don't know what is to improve education. And then I gave you a chart showing how Methacton went from 11 to 59 over the five years, clearly due to the switch from K to 5 and 6 to 8 in 2010. It's obvious you should switch back. Then earlier, I gave you a table of building utilization and functional capacities for a K to 5, 6 to 8 setup without Arrowhead. It shows an excess of 505 seats for K to 5 and 150 seats for K to 8. Several beautiful things about K to 5 and 6 to 8. The better ranking that you will rise to shows better education. Two, it avoids your wants for a new Arrowhead. Three, you can keep the master plan on schedule, including a great price on this year's high school MEP work that you may not get in three or four years. And fourth, obviously, you'll be in a much better financial situation than the struggle to attempt to support an expensive Arcola situation that you need not submit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Bickelman?
I'd like to say Mr. Regina did a good job on that presentation. The Monday-Friday issue with the absences, all right? The Monday-Friday issue with the absences, all right, I wouldn't expect to see that in the teaching environment. I thought that was unusual to see that in that professional environment, Monday-Fridays thingy. And then the other thing, the spring fever issue, you know, I thought that was unusual to see that too, the days in May, you know, the high rate of attendance or absences by the teaching staff in May. I thought that was unusual. Talking about 180 days of work, okay? I'm going to give you my experience at Colonial where I worked for 33 years. I think we were up to 192 teacher days. 192 teacher days, 185 student days. No act 80 days that cut into the 180 days a teacher should be teaching the kids. No act 80 days, 192 teacher days, 185 student days, and five built-in snow days. No snow days, kids are in school 185 days. Okay? Maybe you ought to call around. But that was built up over the years, over contract negotiations, you know, one day here, two days here, another day there. But what was important was that the kids were getting instruction, okay? We weren't worried about anybody's ski trip or Easter break or summer vacation, okay? It was about students getting an education. So that also included the days for the teachers where they got best practice fairs, professional development, okay? They got all that. There was no act 80 days, none. I can't believe all the act 80 days here that cut into the 180-day time for instructional time to the kids. I think when you're doing this calendar, you've got to think about kids being instructed, okay? You saw the Monday-Friday days, okay? You saw the spring fever days. When you evaluate a teacher, you should be pulling their attendance report and going over that with them, just so that they know you're looking, just so they know that, hey, you're taking an excessive amount of Monday and Friday days. Hey, you're out a lot in May, okay? Hey, you take all your five personal days every year. You don't accumulate any. That should be part of the evaluation. We're talking 180 days here, 180 days. I think the union here has been pretty slick, from my experience in being on the periphery. I think the union here has been pretty slick with what was going on here, you know? I think you need to increase the instructional time for these kids. I really do. That attendance stuff, that was ridiculous, I think. Monday-Friday days, really? Peaking Monday-Fridays? That's ridiculous. I sent the board an email about the discussion at the finance committee. I'm sure you all got it. I sent that out. Talks about the financing that's being proposed for the new Arrowhead and delaying capital projects. I think you ought to read that. I think you ought to pay attention to Mr. Andrews' analyses because it makes sense. Nobody ever looked at that 5-6 structure at Skyview when it was built, based on the 6,500 kids coming in here. Nobody looked at the educational benefits of that. He was here. He lived through it, okay? And there was no analysis afterwards. Just ran with it. And those 6,500 kids never showed up, you know? So there was no analysis of that change. But you ought to look at those numbers and pay attention to them, really pay attention to them, because you're going to spend a lot of money on a project you don't need at Arrowhead.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Dr. Malik.
Nice job, Mr. Regina. I've got to give you that too. Very understandable, short, not too much detail, so that was a good job. With regards to what Mr. Andrews had to say about the grade structure 5 to 6, there's really two explanations that you really can come up with as to why your ranking, it's gone from 11 to 59 over the past five years, at least that I can come up with. One of them is what Mr. Andrews just talked about, because Skyview got built in 2010, those fifth and sixth graders took five years to get to, or the sixth graders took five years to get to 12th grade. So that would put it right about when the rankings started dropping. The other thing or explanation is roughly five years ago, you guys took over. So every year since you've taken over, the ranking has dropped. So Mr. Navarette didn't like Mr. Andrews' explanation, so I came up with another explanation that may do it. So I think you have to think about what's been going on here since you took over. I call it the Arrowhead fixation. I think you guys have ignored what you're here for, and that's to make sure the kids get a good education. And the proof's in the pudding. The ranking's dropping like a stone. I think the 2020 ranking came out and you're 69. So I would spend more time dealing with the issues that caused the problem rather than your fixation on Arrowhead. Who makes the decisions regarding your right-to-know process here? Is it you guys? Now, you don't answer questions at board meetings. You refuse to answer written questions. How are we supposed to get information here? If you don't answer our questions, how do we get it? The way I figure it, it's only one way you can get its right to know. So you guys are causing your own right-to-know issues. Who's in charge of spending taxpayer money on right-to-know? Is it me, Mr. Bickelman, Mr. Andrews? I heard shame on us for your $130,000 expenditure last year on right-to-know. The last time I checked, I don't get to spend money. You guys do. So maybe you ought to think about why you're spending that kind of money. And I'll try to help you. You have up to three attorneys and a paralegal looking at each and every right-to-know request. Now, do you think that's cost-effective? Doesn't make sense to me. Three attorneys, one paralegal, and you're $130,000. Maybe you guys ought to start looking at the problems and why they're caused. Do you know what the copying costs are for responses to right-to-know requests? How much it costs to make copies? Nobody seems to know. But now you're going to start charging us for records, first time in 10 years, to offset the expense to the taxpayer. Well, you don't even know what the expense is. So I don't think it's fair to blame taxpayers for your ridiculous system. So I'd look at it.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, before we adjourn, I know Dr. Zerbi has something that he'd like to bring up.
So I should have brought this up under new business, but it's certainly not the thing I'm asking the board to act on at this moment. But I think it's important that the board knows that we've generally had a history in Methacton of providing early retirement incentives, probably more so than maybe other school districts near us. But nonetheless, whether that's good or bad, my comment here this evening is that we think that, you know, there may be folks within the teaching ranks that might be holding on to notices of retirement in hopes that we might be considering such a thing. And I thought, as I discussed with my administration, how we best can communicate that. And then obviously, I don't have the authority to say we will or we won't have an early retirement incentive. But I think if there's no objection here this evening, I know, I think that it would probably be helpful if, because we haven't had any discussion about early retirement incentives, and I would like to know whether or not there's any objection to me putting an item on the agenda to say that we wouldn't be doing any early retirement incentives for this year, so that that message can be communicated to staff, hopefully helping them recognize that the sooner we get notice, the better we can plan for next year. So this, because there's nothing right now that tells an employee that they have to submit a notice to us. So with that said, comments? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I certainly would support if we have to formalize. I am not supporting, I know personally, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but I am not supporting any type of early retirement incentive for 20, for this year. And if that encourages the staff to give us or not give us, whichever they want, at least a decision point, I think that we need to make sure that that's clear to the union.
I appreciate your comments, and I just want to make a clarification. I have no definitive knowledge that suggests this action will produce a particular result. There is hearsay that gets to my level, and I certainly, I want you to know that I don't go to employees directly or ask my HR office to go to employees directly to get that information because by no means are we encouraging people to retire. That's, I mean, we love our staff. We think they are a tremendous asset to our organization. But you need to understand that when we're caught in June figuring out how to fill a challenging position, the crunch, it gets much harder to deal with those things.
Yeah.
And we're just trying to get ahead of it, and we would like your support.
Let's be honest, the human behavior, when we've provided a fairly lucrative incentive in the past, I would wait myself, at least to know if there was or wasn't. So for us to get on the record makes perfect sense, and the union's doing the right thing for their membership. There's no ill will. It's just I will not be supporting any type of package.
So then, I'm not certain how everyone else feels, and we don't necessarily need to speak on it, but if there's any objection to me adding something for your consideration at next week's meeting, I'd like to do that. So I'll just give it one second of thought. Okay, I'll put that on the agenda. Unless, oh, I'm sorry.
I tried to give you a little high sign. That's okay. Now, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. What I would like to see, though, is an analysis of what we did, of what the results were the last time we did this, so we know that, you know, we lost, you know, teacher X who was in this position, and after all the check awarding, the person that ended up, you know, essentially filling that role now had a salary of X with benefits, et cetera, so that we see what the actual financial impact was. Because I think ultimately, that's the meat behind any decision.
That's a fair request. We've already done that analysis, so that's something we can certainly provide you, and that's the basis for our recommendation as well. We can certainly get that to you. Any other last requests? If not, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. I just wanted to address a couple of things from courtesy of the floor. Ms. Kaplan, my understanding for the issue that we're having with the German teacher, which I've been following closely myself, is that the timeline for bringing someone on in the guest teacher program would not expedite the process. We would still have her in as a certified teacher prior to getting her qualified through the guest teacher program. But I know that our HR office is working diligently, and if there was any way we could have brought her in yesterday, we would have. We're getting there, and I feel for you. Mr. Andrews and Mr. Bickelman, I appreciate your feedback and your input and the emails that you have sent, and we do read them. As far as the right-to-know discussion, I just wanted to read a recent right-to-know request, and bear with me because it's long. This is a, let's see, 24-item right-to-know request. This is from one day. All records regarding the total cost of copying of responsive records to right-to-know requests filed with the district monthly for calendar year 2018-2019. All records regarding the total cost of copying of responsive records to right-to-know requests filed with the district monthly for calendar year 2019 to present. All records regarding the cost of copies of responsive records to individual right-to-know requests filed with the district monthly for calendar year 2018-2019. All records regarding the cost of copies of responsive records to individual right-to-know requests filed with the district monthly for calendar year 2019 to present. All records and/or records of communication to and/or from the superintendent regarding the total cost of copying of responsive records to right-to-know requests filed with the district monthly from January 1st 18 to January 1st 19, including those on personal computers and personal email accounts. All records and/or records of communication to and/or from the superintendent regarding the total cost of copying of responsive records to right-to-know requests filed with the district monthly from January 1st 19 to present, including those on personal computers and personal email accounts. That's just six of the 24 items in one email from one day. So when questions are raised regarding why we need assistance with our right-to-know process, I believe that that helps illustrate it. Any other comments from the board before we adjourn? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.